We've got these averages, sixty-three per cent are already using, was it sixty-three per cent already use walk and cycle. But where are the easy wins? Where are the areas in our borough where there is a public transport accessibility level of 1B or lower, which means that people are more than fifteen minute walk to at least one public transport access routes? There are areas in our ward, there are areas in the South Chiswick Liverpool neighbourhood, where we have areas where it's a 1A, but that wasn't taken into consideration. Where is that modal shift that hasn't yet taken place? Where is it that people aren't taking to their feet? And I assume they're non-motorised vehicles or their non-motorised wheels. One of the things I did ask for when we were consulting on the South Chiswick Liverpool neighbourhood was a need to create more access by the river. As we are saying, we are looking to the future. Actually, a lot of the roads that we navigate around now may not be accessible in 2041. However, there will be a potential to have more access and travel along the river. Look at, we are at Chiswick Pier Trust, looking at different routes around that. But also, we need better access to connect us across the river. With the closure of Hammersmith Bridge, it's really impacted the east of the borough. But actually, if you go south, it doesn't help much things either. And so there are opportunities. It would be great to see another crossing at Brentford or even at the Apprentice or by the Apprentice in Isle-Worth. There is potential, there is land that's owned that was primed for development prior to the pandemic. And so I would love to see some of that included with some of that data. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Councillor Mann, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this council is following on from central government policies of showing a slight in hand. Central Government made lots and lots of promises, and that's what got Keir Starmer elected. And then he reneged on a lot of the promises, which I did warn about. And I think that this council is now no different. The policy that is being put forward, it cannot be a standalone policy for it to work. It needs to be part of an integrated policy along with central government. Because the air isn't just around Houser, and it's not just around Houser that we're asking to do things, because cars are travelling all over the place from Heathrow all the way down into central London. So we really need to have an integrated thought around it. And if we look at some of the key metrics that are being put in front of us, it's on page forty-five, and we're looking at twenty twenty-three and twenty-two, and what is extended up to twenty twenty-four. Councillor Tom Bruce talks about kids. My kids are important to me, and I take it that your kids will be important to you. But in twenty forty-one, we've only managed to take off less than five hundred cars a year from the hundred and five thousand six hundred and sixty-six given to the ninety-eight thousand nine hundred. In twenty thirty, if there's not going to be no petrol, there are no diesel sales, we would expect a much steeper dive and a much greater reduction. And that's not happening here in this policy. And we're being asked to accept this just by not thinking and parking our brains outside the door. We're also looking at, look, nitrogen dioxide emissions, from seven hundred and ten to fifty tonnes, that's key. We need to do a lot more around that, because they are carcinogenic elements. PM10s, Canadian studies have found that any people who are within hundred to two hundred yards of a major road, they're getting problems with PM10s and PM2s, which increase the likelihood of brain damage in terms of Alzheimer's, dementia, and so forth. Yet, look at the PM10s. We've gone from ninety-two tonnes to fifty-six tonnes. A derisory reduction, a derisory reduction in sixteen years, and that's after twenty thirty, no petrol, no diesel. We're not doing enough. No way. And for councillor Tom Bruce to bring out, wheel out the kids, is this what we're going to give our kids? Half-baked, not delivering policy that we can't stand by. We're just loading it for the sake of loading it, so that we actually make this council look as if it's doing something, when actually, matter of fact, it's very retrograde. I think when you look at what central government has done, electric cars, no charge for road tax, now a charge for road tax, all the incentives are being taken away. Why would people want to change from diesel onto electric cars? We're not even putting enough electric points around the borough, right? And I take it that our neighbouring boroughs are doing very much the same. Because why? They're under financial pressure. That's a key motivation of not delivering on this policy. And that's why this, Madam Mayor, I will finish well before your one minute. Thank you for the intervention. I think that this needs to be reworked, and it needs to be a lot more aggressive. You know, we're not anti-car. Well, saying that's great. But then, we're also anti-pollution, but we're not doing anything about it. Why is that? I think this needs to be revisited. It needs to have another look at it. As it stands, I shall not be supporting it, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Mann. Councillor Gill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like my fellow councillors, I wasn't going to speak, but I thought I should speak. Thank you for this transport strategy. But looking at it, there's no mention about the railways anywhere. What about the connection that we've been talking for years to connect Brentford to Southall, or connecting to HST, or to Brent Cross? There's no mention of that, or connecting to the line to make life easier. But there is, it seems to have just gone past. Anyway, that's my contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gill. Councillor Rajuat, please.
It's a very surreal debate. The Tories tell us we're doing too much. Councillor Mann tells us we're not doing enough. But neither of them have any basis on which they make those claims. Councillor Giles, you are aside. Thank you for your comments. I take those on board. But the rest of them, I mean, what on earth have you been going on about? A strategy is a strategy. It talks about a certain set of aims. It is not the end point. It is the starting point of yet more work. If you think that councillor Dunn is going to sit down and go, well, this has been passed, that's it, my job is done, you're more deluded than anyone else. I mean, what on earth is going on? It's just absolutely ridiculous. I mean, you know, what the Tories tonight have shown us is what they are nationally as well, absolute climate deniers. If they had their way, climate change would be all over the place, and they would be blissfully unaware. Those rivers that are rising and flooding those roads that councillor McGregor told us about, well, that would be across the borough, and they would say, not our problem, because we are against this. Councillor Mann, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you were trying to say. Starting with this is a starting point. I agree, we need to do more, we will do more. But, you know, everything takes time, and everything takes a lot of effort. To give up just like that is just not acceptable. To say that it's done, you're not doing enough, I don't care, I'm not going to vote for this, is really, really bad in light of the comments that you made. And I think that is really, really shameful. No, look, this is a starting point. There is more work to do. This sits alongside a whole suite of strategies that we cannot ignore. They all work together, and that's the difference in this council. When we put a strategy up, it doesn't sit in isolation, it sits with other things. And I ask, request my car-friendly climate deniers over there to look at all the strategies and read them in totality before trying to throw stones. And, you know, councillor Mashisho, your point that we are not a listening council, we are a listening council. For the party that keeps coming third in election after election, it's not us that's the problem, it is entirely you.
Thank you, councillor Rajuat. Councillor Todd, and then I'll go to councillor Dunn to sum up. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I wasn't going to speak. I'm slightly nervous, so bear with me. But I do enjoy this double act in the front row over here. We listen. Didn't we listen when we installed the LTN? We gave twelve million PCNs to motorists. That was our gift to them, twelve million. And what did you do with the money that you got from the tickets? Well, I've no idea. There was no additional streets, there was no safety. Chiswick House, there we are. But that's a classic example. I mean, Catherine Dunn was held in fear over these twelve million tickets. Linked to that, we have key premises, chemists and doctors in Grove Park, key businesses. We've studied them closely and sought representation without success. These businesses are about to die. They're so crucial, they're so important, this chemist. Fascinating money in Grove Park, most of their customers come from Kew. And it just shows, when you start doing inquiries, a couple of examples, we heard from the director of Adult Services about how poor our young children, young people get paid in the borough. So why is it necessary for you to pull up PCNs to the West End prices? Why must it be a hundred and sixty? Is that enough? I find that offensive. In planning, we had a home base site came forward. I've heard time and time again, people trying to get a job in Brentford, where they can't get on the bus in the morning from Ealing. It's a long, simple problem. And yet, it took TFL to impose, was it three or four bus routes, before the planning went through? Now, why haven't we identified that? If you're listening, give us some evidence. Couple of minor points, if I could, please. Catherine Dunn had the audacity to talk about charging points. I mean, I suppose I've got to confess to her that you installed charge points, it don't work. And you had to come along the road and cut out the words electric charge point. And we have people with cars in my road who were crying because they simply can't find the charge space. So the director, Catherine Dunn, to be fair, said she'll have them ready by twenty twenty-six. But there's a huge void. So on the basis of the evidence so far, trying could fight harder. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Councillor Dunn, if you could sum up, please.
Thank you. Gosh, we're wearing for a treat, weren't we? Almost every opposition member spoke. I mean, I think those who, you know, from the Conservative group, I think there may be one or maybe more who disagreed with councillor Thompson's comments, probably felt their hearts sink when some of their colleagues got up to speak. But let's start with councillor Thompson. I mean, you're living in a fantasy world, I'm afraid, where we can increase traffic flow without decreasing the number of vehicles on the road. It just doesn't work like that, I'm afraid. And when we come to councillor Mashisho, spreading myths that we are an anti-car borough, that we don't, that we're trying to ban people from driving cars, we're taking away people's choice. Everyone in this borough has the choice to drive a car if they wish to. But unlike you, councillor Mashisho, I do think it is our responsibility to try to influence people's choices, to give them a greater choice. And that is what this strategy does. We are opening up choices so that more people are able to use public transport, more people feel safe cycling around the borough, more people can walk and wheel, which means in a wheelchair more easily. The councillor McGregor, you know, you said a lot, but just to pick on one, you say that we agreed with TFL's proposed scheme. We put in a very strong response to TFL's consultation on the Hogarth roundabout scheme. We did not agree with every aspect of that scheme. We agreed with the general idea of trying to make the roundabout safer. But we challenged TFL, and we said we want a scheme that is much more ambitious, and we also opposed certain aspects of it. We were very much in line with residents and indeed with opposition councillors there. So I'm really not sure where you were coming from there. But what it does show is the importance of consultation, because following the consultation with the council, with councillors, with residents, with businesses, TFL have said they will revisit and revise that scheme. So that's a good outcome, so far as I'm concerned. Councillor Bidolf, you asked some good questions about how will we monitor activity. Those figures come from a TFL survey, that there will be ones in future that show how things have changed. I'm sure it is referenced in the report. Councillor Giles, I absolutely agree, public transport is key. And we'd be putting forward a much more detailed plan on how we will support public transport, acknowledging, of course, that it isn't directly in our control. And we do have to work with partners. So it's not surprising that partners are mentioned in the report. Councillor Mann, very glad that you want to reduce the number of cars on the road, that you want to increase, that see an increase in that changeover from fossil fuel cars to electric cars. We are putting in two thousand charge points. I have reassured councillor Thompson recently, and can also reassure councillor Todd, that is going ahead. We are about to issue contracts for the installation of charge points. Councillor Gill, thank you for your intervention, but you're going to have to read the report again. It does mention rail, it does mention Brentford to Southall, it does mention West London Orbital.
So, look, thank you for all your comments, your interventions. I'm very clear, and, you know, last reference goes to councillor Bruce, because this is about the future. It's about now, and it's about the future, and creating a better borough for all. Thank you, councillor Dunn. So I'd now like to move to the vote on the recommendations. There are two to note and one to approve. All those in favour of the recommendations? And those against? And any abstentions? Lovely. Thank you. So that's carried on to the pay policy statement. May I draw attention to a small error in the agenda front page, which suggests that councillor Shibrage-Girrawell is the relevant cabinet member for this item. The report is actually by the leader, and so I would now like to invite councillor Shantony Rajuat to propose the report.
Not as good-looking as councillor Girrawell, obviously. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The pay policy, as members will be aware, is a statutory requirement under the Localism Act 2011, which sets out our approach to pay, to the pay of our senior leaders and our lowest, sorry, the relationship, and the approach to pay of our senior leaders and our lowest-paid employees for the next twelve months. It's designed to be open and transparent about the way we pay our highest and lowest-paid employees, and it needs to be agreed by Borough Council annually. Just to reassure, any variations to it within the next twelve months would have to be, would have to come back to Borough Council for approval. To draw out a couple of details from this report for ease, it talks about our pay multiple. I can report that our pay multiple, that's the multiple of highest to lowest pay, remains largely stable at eight point seven. The median pay multiple, so that's the median salary compared to the highest earner, remains fairly stable at five point two. And again, in terms of benchmarking, that for the size and complexity of our organisation, it does compare favourably with the pay multiple that is reported in both the private and public sector, and also benchmarks favourably in line with our neighbouring boroughs, such as Hillingdon, Ealing, Richmond, Housworth and Fulham, and Spellthorn. And where the average current published median pay multiple is five point five. Our gender pay gap, so that's the difference between what men and women are paid on average, was three point eight six at thirty first of March. And that compares against one point seven nine in the previous year. And the report does go into some of the rationale. But the sort of small increase in our gender pay gap is likely due to the reduction of the percentage of women in our top middle quartile, that's PO4 grade to PO, sorry, PO2 to PO4, and more women at the lower quartile, that's apprentice to SO1, from sixty-three point oh seven per cent to sixty-three point nine per cent. Now, we also, in this report, report on our ethnicity and disability pay gaps, whilst these are not statutory requirements, we think it is important for a diverse borough to report on these. And as at thirty first of March 2024, the median ethnicity pay gap was three point eight six, which is a slight reduction from four per cent in 2022. And our disability median pay gap was minus two point nine per cent. The gender pay gap report sets out a range of initiatives we are progressing as part of our ongoing commitment to EDI across the organisation. And to draw out some of the highlights there, obviously, absolutely continuing to increase the diversity of our senior leadership through diverse recruitment panels at CEO and HMG levels. Our leadership at LBH EDI workshops were attended by a hundred and eighty senior leaders, and we continue to achieve strategic change to address inequity through directors focused on action planning. Our resolution framework, which is a new framework, went live in April 2024, and is making a real difference to how we resolve conflict in the workplace. And then we've also led a management essentials workshop, and will continue to develop training for new managers, which includes our organisational commitment to EDI, equality legislation, EDI impact assessments, and EDI in recruitment. And with that, Madam Mayor, I move the report.
Thank you, councillor Rajuat. I'd like to ask councillor Bruce to second the report and speak a few issues.
Thank you very much. Happy to second the report and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak on this report? Councillor Giles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm beginning to feel like a bit like Slim Shady when it comes to this topic, because I think I've spoken on it every year since I was elected in 2018. And in my research, I actually realised I'm wearing the same jumper as I did last year. That was obviously intentional, so we'll see. I obviously need a better wardrobe. But there's much to commend in this report. The aim to develop a flourishing workforce where our people connect, feel they can belong and grow, so that we can deliver outstanding services to our residents, is one we can all get behind, as are the desires to be an employer of choice, where our community is served by people who live our values. However, I have to wonder at what costs. We're all in agreement that we need to be prudent with employment costs, and which is why, as a Conservative group, we have consistently made suggestions, both formally and informally, on how this council can work efficiently to deliver value for money when it comes to delivering services, especially as one of the largest employers in the borough. While we could get caught up in ideological debate on whether we believe in small or large governments, or the role of the private sector when it comes to creating diversity of employment opportunities, there is consistently one thing that we agree on, and that is the need to be a fair employer, where regardless of gender, ethnicity, or ability, you will be paid on parity with your peers. And like any organisation, it is great that the pay policy statement is updated on an annual basis, and creates transparency around the remuneration of employees, specifically chief officers, and outlines guidance for specific situations, such as special severance payments and remuneration of the lowest-paid employees. I do, however, have some questions around section five point six, which alludes to allowance payments for chief officers, as it makes reference to the coronavirus pandemic, but doesn't specifically specify exactly what has been changed, or what is eligible. It kind of would make sense to include it in there. Moving on to the pay gap report for 2024, it's great to see that for a second year, this authority has published the data on the ethnicity pay gap and the disability pay gap. I'm also really interested to see if there is a correlation between women in, well, non-white women, and seeing if we can get that data in future years, because it's an indication of social mobility and opportunity in the borough. As an employer, we are such a diverse borough, and it is only right for us to be representative of the people we're here to serve. However, looking at the data, both our median and median gender pay gaps are the highest they've been since 2018. And worse than that, for the first time in a number of years, our mean gender pay gap is higher than both the neighbouring borough and London borough averages. And I have to ask why. Last year, we were told that this was due to a reduction of percentage of women in senior roles, with the loss of fifty-four in the grade PO4 to chief executives since 2022. So what's the justification this year? We've not really, I've not heard one this evening. And while we've had promises of initiatives, is there a reason why these haven't yet taken effect? Last year, we were also told that the former chief executive had reviewed the top three tiers of the organisation, so the upper quartile, for gender parity, and that the remaining tiers would be looked after after Easter. Was this analysis ever completed? And what were the findings? It would again be good to see that in here. Across the board, these reports show that women, non-white and disabled employees are paid less in the lower and lower middle quartiles, which accounts for some of the discrepancy. However, in the case of gender parity, this council employs more women than men at every quartile. So the rationale doesn't quite add up. Last year, we were told there had been a review for a model for leadership that would be more sustainable, and meet the financial challenges of the future, and be leaner at the top. And that the leadership competencies and a performance management approach in development has been put into action. And if so, how long can we expect to wait to see the results that mean that pay parity is closely aligned across the board? Unlike an IQ test, I hope that these models and initiatives allow for people with diverse backgrounds to demonstrate and pursue their ambitions in a way that rules out any unconscious bias by hiring managers. After all, we don't want to be ambitious for Hounslow. We want to create an environment when more than just forty-three per cent of employees reply to that, to the My Experience Matters survey. But I suppose if it was a public consultation, we'd be absolutely astounded by that rate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If nobody else wishes to speak, I would like to ask councillor Rajuat to sum up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, on this one, there's very little that I can disagree with councillor Giles in what she said. Actually, the organisation is going through change, and I think we do acknowledge that. And the review of the low grades that you mentioned is still ongoing. It's due to report later on this year. But also, at the top tier, whilst a lot of the things that you mentioned were implemented, obviously, there is change there as well. And that needs time to bed in. Look, I think what this points to, councillor Giles, and, you know, I'm not for one second trying to disagree with anything you've said, is organisations do change, and they do flux over time. And so when you take a snapshot at any given point, i.e. the thirty first of March, it will look very different. That's not to say that we should take our eyes off the ball. And certainly in terms of EDI work, and the range of strategies that exist within the organisation, we are absolutely committed to keeping our eye on that ball, and making sure that we get as close to parity as possible. And that's not because we look good, but because it's absolutely the right thing to do across the organisation. So absolutely reassure you, this is absolutely work in progress. But what we're looking at here is a point in time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rajuat. So I'd now like to ask members to vote on the recommendations. It's one for noting and one for agreeing. So all those in favour, again, please? Thank you. And against? And any abstentions? Thank you, councillor Mann. Okay, thank you, everybody. Now I'd like to move on to agenda item seven. She's the Members Scheme of Allowances. And again, I would like to invite councillor Shantony Rajuat to propose the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a standard report that members will be aware of. We produce it every year. You will recall, a number of years ago, I can't remember exactly when, it's probably in the report, we did a large review of Members' allowances, both basic and SRA, taking into consideration the independent panel for remuneration that London councils convenes. We have to have regard for it. We don't necessarily have to agree with everything that's within it, but we certainly have to have regard with it. And we put our rationale. A decision we made at that point was to peg any increases to Members' allowances to the pay award that our staff receive. This report basically reflects that. So there aren't any further changes beyond reflects that. So there aren't any further changes beyond that, apart from reflecting what the NJC award was. So I formally move the report.
Thank you, councillor Radjat. And councillor Bruce, would you like to second the report?
Yep, happy to second and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. And do we have anyone who wants to speak on this? Councillor Bidolf, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm sorry to have to blow the dust off comments that I've made so many times before. This is, I think, the seventh time, and yet again, I will be saying the same as before. We agreed during the twenty eighteen to twenty two term that Members' allowances would be increased, and councillor Radjat's just said this, in line with staff pay each year, rather than hiked every four years, which was unpalatable to our voters. I still agree with that. In its most recent review, the independent review panel that recommends rates to be paid to councillors recommended significant increases across the board, urging councils to introduce them. But this is not the time to do that, and I'm glad the council has not recommended it. Residents and businesses are struggling with increases in council tax, increases in utility bills, increases in the cost of food, increases in tube and rail fares. And businesses will now also have to pay higher employers' national insurance contributions and higher business rates. April will indeed be the cruelest month for many. These increases will damage, perhaps destroy livelihoods. Councillors must not put themselves in a privileged position and award themselves big increases when those we represent are struggling. As I've said every year, whatever we receive in allowances for our work as councillors, it is an obligation on all of us to show our value to our residents and business ratepayers. The basic allowance doesn't compensate for the workload of an engaged, hardworking, proactive councillor and isn't meant to, nor does it match hours spent, and nor is it meant to. It isn't recompense for time spent, it is recognition of time spent. Even though it might be pennies per hour for some, many residents think it is still too much, no matter how hard a councillor works. There is resentment amongst some that we receive anything for what we do. When councillors do little, voters have every right to complain. And in one notable case in Hanslow this year, after a Labour councillor didn't even meet the minimum obligation for council meetings, voters responded. A by-election result returning an independent councillor sends a very clear message to the rest of us. We were elected to work for those we represent, not just to take the money. Moving on to special responsibility allowances, we have consistently questioned the role of cabinet assistants since it was introduced. This role is identified in the independent review panel's list of special responsibilities, but it doesn't mean it has to be filled. In this council's case, it now means that more than seventy five percent of councillors receive special responsibility allowances, when the independent review panel's guidance is that no more than fifty percent of councillors should do so. As I've said before, it smacks of buying support to shore up the leaders' wobbly majority. And I know that the new independent councillor of Sion on Brentford Lock agrees, as he said so in this chamber during the previous council term, when he picked up and endorsed my comment. The percentage point isn't repeated in the latest review panel's recommendations, but I have checked, and it has been confirmed, that the principle hasn't been dropped. The panel wouldn't advise paying SRAs to more than fifty percent of councillors within a borough. The cabinet role isn't, cabinet assistant role, cabinet role, you could argue, isn't essential. It doesn't merit extra money. It should be dropped. Use the money to fill potholes, as we recommended last year, instead of reducing road maintenance standards to the average for London. Madam Mayor, as I said at the start, I'm standing here saying the same as before. We must all work hard to demonstrate value for money. This isn't our money, it is our residents' and our business ratepayers' money. Whether we receive only the basic allowance or receive an additional special responsibility allowance, we must demonstrate to everyone we represent that we are worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bidolf. Councillor Mann, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think councillor Bidolf put a lot of background and sort of a lot of facts into what she says about the Members' allowances. Really, I want to make comparisons with what we are and where we're going with this. We think of Africa as being full of tinpot dictatorships. I actually see them as victims of Western economies and governments, where they're saddled with very high interest rate paybacks on loans. But the point I'm trying to make, in all this mess, there's come to light one gem, and that is the interim president of Burkina Faso, absolute power, absolute authority. He has decided not to increase his two hundred and twenty eight thousand pound.
Is this relevant, councillor?
Yes, absolutely, 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 Madam Mayor. It is, it is, it is, it is. I'm getting there, but slowly. So he has absolute authority to raise it to whatever he likes, but he chose not to do it. Now, when I joined on the council, and there are some members who are still here, Richard Furt, I don't see Jagdish, I hope he's around, people at Burt Ham, people like Brian Price, we always fought against increases because we were socialists from the heart. We wanted to make sure that we represented the people and the people were put first. What has happened in recent years, there's been a systematic increase, year on, year on, year on, of Members' allowances. When I joined the council, I think it was eight hundred pounds you got remuneration for the whole year. It's now been put to thirteen, thirteen thousand, three hundred, or thereabouts. What it does is, it puts the leaders' wage packet at almost sixty thousand pounds a year. That throws into question exactly what councillor Bidolf said. In the eyes of the people, are we worth it? Council Dennison is living proof that the people have voted, that a lot of the stuff that is going on here isn't in keeping in what they believe. And really, you know, there's been creations of posts, what are called Mickey Mouse posts. These Mickey Mouse posts are to make sure that the show goes on and the leader stays the leader. And in reality, there will come a time when that show has to leave town, along with a lot of these Labour councillors. I await that time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mann. Councillor Mashiso, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are existing in a place where some councillors get a hefty allowance for simply sending one email. That is not right. Our residents, I'm sure, will see that that is not right. Allowance for sitting in a meeting, an allowance for the so-called cabinet assistant. The argument goes that better allowances for our council attract a better calibre of councillors. Perhaps this is true. Perhaps this is the case. But what for? Because those calibre councillors, or great calibre councillors who come into this chamber, we have two that we'd like to welcome back here today. Well, for one, I'm afraid once you come into the chamber, you are at the whim of a very overbearing chief whip, who tells you what to do and what not to do.
Point of order. This is not on the subject, and it's a personal attack. And I think councillor Mashiso needs to withdraw that comment immediately.
Are you going to withdraw, councillor Mashiso?
What's the charge?
Abuse of the chief whip.
Madam Mayor, I'm just making a point. What's the point of reference?
Oh, sorry. I didn't realise you were talking about councillor Emsley. I really apologise.
Okay, if we could all just stop and carry on with your speech, but please, please no more personal attacks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I was saying, when great calibre of councillors come into this chamber, they are summoned to listen and vote according to what their chief whip is telling them. That is not right. If we are going to be attracting the best into this chamber, we must allow them to speak, just as you allow me to speak now, Madam Mayor. So when we look at this council...
Are you making a point on the topic?
Can you stop my time, Madam Mayor, because you're interrupting my stop? I'm sorry, but you are.
Or can you keep your comment?
I'm talking about special responsibility allowance. Can I speak, or am I not allowed to speak?
Please continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when it comes to this council, we are asking about accountability, and we are all in the same boat. Accountability is key. And I have to give credit, I pay credit to one recipient of the SRA, the special responsibility allowance, as cabinet member, who has done her very, very best in the last few weeks to prove how worth as a cabinet assistant. And I want to give her credit for that. But I think more councillors need to do that. More councillors need to show what they really are worth. So let's see more councillors, please, standing up and taking responsibility. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mashiso. Councillor Dennison, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, councillors. It was only a little while ago I was speaking on this particular issue, and I'm particularly pleased to actually hear Joanna again speaking on this issue so ably. And she's absolutely right in terms of the basic allowance. I entirely accept that the basic allowance hardly compensates for the hardworking and engaged local councillors that do exist on this council, and have always existed on this council, across several parties, not just one. However, the simple fact is, no resident believes that the basic allowance should be paid for councillors, they simply do not turn up and do not do the work, either in terms of the meetings that they are due to attend, or for the day-to-day grind in terms of the work that is required in every single one of our wards. I went to get a haircut, special haircut, just to treat you this morning. It took me two hours to get back home because of the number of people and the number of dumps of rubbish in Brentford, because this council is starting to fail because councillors are not doing their job, and certain officers know that councillors are not doing their jobs. And I hate to think what some other wards would be like, because actually Brentford is not that badly served by its councillors, but certainly at the moment it is insufficient. Insufficient action was taken by your group to discipline Balraj Sarai when he failed to attend these meetings, and you have been punished in the ballot box for that. But this is not just a day-to-day thing that you're pressing through today, this annual motion to increase your allowances. It is a failure on your part to grasp the nettle in terms of accepting what Joanna has said about the cap that is recommended on allowances, on SRAs, as far as all councils are concerned. Fifty percent and no more should be paid SRAs, and action should be taken today to get rid of those less than able, less than contributing cabinet assistants, and some of your cabinet members who are not pulling the weight. Action should be taken today to do something about the additional allowances that are being paid to area forms that you've invented but barely function. And action should be taken today to get rid of the whips on all sides, because the whips stand in the way of all councillors doing a decent job for their constituents. Not only do they stop them from speaking up on their behalf in the council chamber, but they also stop them speaking up in front of the press and to their constituents. How can anybody do a job of work when they live in fear of being deselected by yourselves? And don't laugh, because you absolutely know that this has happened and will be happening again this year. How can they do their job when they do not dare speak up against any, any infaction, any failure of the council, because they know that they will not be a councillor if they do it again? You should cut those SRAs, and you should certainly cut the use of the whip to stop councillors doing their job.
Thank you, councillor Dennison. Councillor McGregor, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the key things about what we do as a council is we keep on reducing the number of meetings that councillors attend. Some time ago, we used to have a minimum of twelve area fora a year. Those twelve area fora gave an opportunity to people to speak and to debate. Now, the area fora were very local. Some were split delivery for parties, some were single party. But nonetheless, nonetheless, people had to work hard. In those days, not so long ago, while I was on the council, so not so long ago, we had two types of meeting. One was a monitoring area forum held every quarter. And who turned up? We had people from the civil defence, the fire brigade, and the police forces turning up to give us their report on the local area, very often with someone like an inspector attending, because it was seen to be important as a link to the council. We also had, in the monitoring, we had other people coming along to tell us about the health service. We had other people coming along to make complaints, and we had an open session with the public. I recollect that the Chiswick area forum was very well attended and sometimes quite noisy. It got even noisier when eight times a year we were the planning authority, because we were the planning authority. And that localism was hugely important to councillors, because of course, they were taking decisions that affected people in their wards, although they had to declare the position that they were the ward member for this particular planning application. And that was good form. So it was highly professional. Now, councillor Bidolf, councillor Mashiso, have made these points about professionalism. Well, let's have a look at some history, shall we? Councillors used not to get stipends because they used to be all middle class, and they were doing it in their spare time. We're still doing it in our spare time. But we're now getting a rather nice treasury addition every month. And what do we do for it? Some people, as we've heard from councillor Dennison, do a grand job. They work very hard, they're committed, they're socially responsible. Other people are very happy to take the stipend and not even answer the phone, not even speak to me when I ask them questions. I'm not quite sure whether there's a barrier between me and councillors. I try very hard to ensure that we all are in it together. But the important point is, if we carry on in this way, we're going to divorce ourselves from the public at large. I don't resent in any way councillor Radjat getting sixty thousand a year, because quite simply, being the leader of the council is almost as onerous as being the leader of a large corporation. After all, we have a half a billion pound budget. But the important thing about that half a billion pound budget is that I feel very strongly that those people who talk in the budget debates do not have sufficient financial knowledge. It's not that they're ignorant, it's not that they're stupid, they just don't have sufficient knowledge to make informed decisions about key events. So the budget debates are foreshortened to prevent embarrassment. So we now have an ordinary debate, when it should be a budget debate, when every item on the budget should be open to scrutiny, every item. I'm very proud to say that in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, when I was the budget lead, we had open access to the budget. In other words, every item could be scrutinised, and we went through the budget, not line by line, but section by section. And that made sure that the officers understood that we were scrutinising what they were up to, because the budget is the key document. Madam Mayor, I've said enough about this matter. But I do want people to understand that I'm with you all as councillors. We are not to be disparaged for the work we do. But like councillor Bedjot said, we've got to justify ourselves every time, and you can only do that if you do the work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. Councillor Siddy, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know why we are discussing this matter. Madam Mayor, we all are here today, sixty two of us. Anybody can write a letter to chief exec and say that they don't want an SRA. It's very simple. And none of them, who just give a big speech, have that courage to write a letter that we don't want an SRA. And second thing, Madam Mayor, second thing they're raising is... And second thing, Madam Mayor, second thing they're raising is they're giving certificates that who's a good councillor, who's a bad councillor. Madam, who are they? They will be going to the public in 2026 and I can assure you, half of them will not be here. Especially the newcomer who just got 400 votes and he is just today coming up that I'm a big winner. And the other party, madam, they came third and fourth. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Siddey. I'd now like to ask councillor Redjat to sum up, please.
Strangely, I actually agree with councillor McGregor to a certain degree. You have to do the work to justify the allowance and actually it's the public that judge that. Councillor Siddey is absolutely right and they'll judge us in 2026. So your judgment counts for very little in this chamber. I will give out, I will assign jobs as I see fit and they will do the jobs and report to me. That is the way leadership works. So there is an underlying principle here though. The role of councillor has changed, the demands have changed. We are increasingly, all of us, on 24 hours a day. Often my first phone call in the morning is seven o'clock, my last phone call can be 11, 12 o'clock and I'm always working in between. And that's not me trying to justify my £60,000 a year salary, but I'm justifying it on behalf of all of us. That is the demand that people place on us and I think that should be remunerated if you're a Cabinet Member, a Committee Chair or a Cabinet Assistant, your demands are increased and that should be remunerated. So I think that is an important principle that we have to acknowledge. This is about paying that to the pay award so that we are not excessive in what we are rewarding ourselves. In Parliament, obviously there is an independent body and there is a pay increase that is going through there, that is receiving lots of traction. I am personally very uncomfortable about marking my own homework. I would rather have an independent panel looking at our pay and through my role in London councils, that is something that we are pushing for heavily and that's absolutely the right thing to do. I can't resist. I mean, I welcome you councillor Dennison and thank you for your comments, but really kids in glass houses should not throw stones. When you do more than 15 pieces of casework in a four-year period, come and talk to me and we'll talk about allowances again.
Can we all try to keep personal attacks down? Yeah, just... Please, please, let's try not to keep it personal. Thank you. So now we can move on to the vote. There are three recommendations to approve. Those in favour? Thank you. Those against? Thank you. And any abstentions? Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. So we move on to agenda item eight, the constitutional review. This is the latest tranche of the constitutional review. May I also draw members' attention to the two small amendments which have been identified and can be found in the supplementary agenda? I would again like to invite councillor Radjat to propose and introduce the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. As you said, this is the latest tranche. I think we are close to the end. I think beyond this, there will be ad hoc meetings of the Members Constitutional Working Group, which is cross-party and can I thank colleagues from across the chamber who have taken part in this work? I have to say mostly it's been very collegiate, we've agreed on most things, but we always knew there would be a point where perhaps we would disagree and tonight may well be that night. So I'm going to rattle through very quickly some of the changes and hopefully I get through them in the five minutes, so bear with me, I'm going to be quite quick. So in terms of rule eight, duration of meetings. So the initial time limit for meetings is extended to three hours unless extended beyond that period by resolution approved before the original three hours has elapsed. The existing absolute cutoff time of 11pm has been removed and that's now in line with budget and planning meetings. Sorry, that is now in line with the budget meeting and planning meetings as well. Any reports not disposed of by the closure time will be put formally to the vote without discussion. Obviously, the exception here is planning and licensing committees. Motion's already moved and seconded will be treated as having been withdrawn. They can be resubmitted at future meetings if the proposing member chooses. Rule nine, question for members, the ability to ask senior officer questions on reports has been removed. Questions without notice on reports can now be asked of the relevant committee chair, leader or Cabinet Members. For questions on notice in relation to a matter that is not on the agenda, these will only be accepted if they are urgent and cannot be dealt with in another way and it is in the public interest. Or the mayor makes the decision having taken advice from the monitoring officer. Rule 10, motions on notice, there'll be up to three motions per council meeting. That's excluding the budget meeting and the annual general meeting. Motions that do not relate to reports on the agenda, there'll be a maximum number of motions of 12 per year. The allocation of motions between political groups will be based on proportion of seats. Where groups do not get a motion at a council meeting, they can choose which meeting it will be tabled at, subject to giving six weeks' notice. The mayor can agree to take additional motions on grounds of urgency following consultation with the chief executive and the monitoring officer. And the time limit of 30 minutes for the consideration of motions has been removed in this. In terms of the rules of debate, that's rule 12. The length of speech timings has been changed so that there is five minutes for a mover's opening speech and any amendments to it. So someone moving a speech or moving an amendment will still get five minutes. All other speeches are three minutes and if longer, only with the consent of the chair. The length of speech timings for the budget meeting have been changed so that the leader and the leader of the opposition have 10 minutes each to introduce and respond to the budget respectively. If the leader of the opposition proposes an amendment to the budget, then this must be dealt with within the 10-minute period noted just a second ago. If a member of the main opposition group other than the leader proposes an amendment to an alternative budget, they only have five minutes. And the right for a member to request an intervention has also been removed. Finally, rule 13 in terms of amendments. So amendments which must be seconded must be submitted in writing by 4pm two working days before the meeting. If the monitoring officer rules it in order, it will be circulated by 5pm on the day of the meeting. And then new budget amendments must be submitted by 5pm on the day which is one week after the date of the budget cabinet meeting. If the monitoring officer and section 15 officer rules in order, will be published as supplementary agenda as soon as reasonably practicable thereafter. And members may now propose a maximum of one amendment to any motion. There's quite a bit in there, there's quite a bit of detail in the report. Happy to take any questions and discussions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Radjat. Councillor Bruce, would you like to second?
Yes, happy to second and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. And councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the leader said, we have cross-party work go very constructively. Lots of meetings, we've all been earning our money, haven't we, in those meetings? And as you've said, we've agreed on the vast majority of the changes. But I think even at the outset, we knew that this would be the one where we perhaps agree to disagree. And in particular, what I'm going to talk about, is the issue of council motions. We think this change, which means in reality that instead of having been able to put a motion to every borough council meeting, which is only four because the AGM and the budget meeting don't really have motions attached to them. So it's only four times a year, that's reduced to two. Again, we were discussing earlier about when we first came onto the council. When I first came onto the council, yes, I didn't even know, no one even told me when I was elected there was an allowance, so shows how stupid I was. But we used to have about, every month we'd have a borough council meeting. So we had many opportunities to debate current, up-to-date things. But we can do four at the moment as the opposition and when these changes go forward, based on our numbers at the moment, we can only have two. This reduction in opposition motions is not just a procedural tweak. We think it's a serious erosion of accountability and debate and it undermines our ability as an opposition party, elected by thousands of people across this borough, to represent those who sent us here. In Westminster, opposition parties have 20 days, opposition days, to raise motions, scrutinise policy and shape the national debate. That's democracy. But here in Hounslow, we're now restricted to two motions per year dulled out by a political formula. Let's be clear, this isn't about efficiency. Council meetings can and should, as we've had tonight, accommodate debate and I'm sure that will continue in some ways. But this change is really about silencing dissent and centralising control. We do believe as Conservatives in limited government, free speech and local accountability. And this change, I'm afraid, takes away all three of those. We have raised every meeting a motion that's been discussed. Some of them were so impressive that you actually amended them and agreed with them, are the ones you booted out. But I think actually we chose motions on issues that really matter to the residents of Hounslow. Discussions of topics that deserved a hearing and deserved a debate. So we had the motion, I'm just going back to one from this year, when we recognised cross-party the contribution of the Tamil community and we all agreed to promote Tamil Heritage Month. We stood up and many people in debate across the chamber agreed with this to speak out for the 28,000 old people who lost their winter fuel allowance. We called for support recently for businesses and charities who were facing increased costs from national insurance contributions. And in that motion, we had a range of practical things that would make a difference. These motions and many others weren't just political theatre. We didn't just pick them to sort of, you know, embarrass, partly that's why we picked them. But actually there were serious issues behind all of them. They were topical issues, they're things that people cared about and they would expect us as their councillors to be debating. Under these rules, we just have to pick a couple and give six months' notice or whatever, six weeks' notice. That's not democracy, it is procedural censorship. Colleagues, we must not allow opposition voices to be reduced to tokens. Now, we heard earlier that half of us are going to lose our seats next time. Well, if you want a one-party status, this is the first step towards it. When there is no dissent, like in Richmond, imagine that, hell, it must be awful. A chamber full of Liberal Democrats, all agreeing with themselves. Is that how it's going to be? You know, is that how it's going to be? Is that what you want? Maybe this is the first move towards, but obviously we're not all going to lose our seats. Think about the electoral cycle, quite the opposite's going to happen. I just urge this council to reconsider and to think about. We agree it's going to go through tonight, but we would restore this and we would give the right of opposition groups to propose motions because we believe in democracy, in fairness and accountability. Because when power silences opposition, it stops serving the people and it serves only itself. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Emesley, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Councillor Thompson's always a tough act to follow. Can I start just by taking this opportunity to welcome councillor Dennison and councillor Mosley to this council? I think it's safe to say none of us quite align on our politics, we're all a little bit different. But we are stronger as a council when we have a diversity of views and experiences. And I look forward to working with them both for at least the next year and who knows, maybe the public might vote us in for a few more years after that. Let's just hold in our minds that importance of diversity and experiences for a bit later. And as councillor Thompson said, we were members of the Constitutional Working Group that looked at these proposals. We worked cross-party with Labour counterparts and for the most part, there was unanimity, there was consensus because most of the changes up until this point, I think, were good for governance and they ultimately delivered a better council for our residents. And that consensus wasn't reached though on this latest set of proposals. And councillor Thompson and I were in two very lengthy meetings about this current report and I think it's worth just putting on record here the concerns that we raised in those meetings and why we can't support them this evening. Fundamentally, there are two big changes coming to how this council operates. The first is that this will be the last set of questions on notice. Councillors are currently able to ask any question of any Cabinet Member. This will be replaced with the ability to ask questions about reports presented by Cabinet Members. I agree that allows more precise questioning, but it does take away that choice of a question topic. But the second change, which councillor Thompson alluded to, is how motions work. Currently, the majority group presents two motions at a council meeting and the opposition one motion. This change means that the opposition group will be limited to two motions across the entirety of the next municipal year. In theory, that means it's a little bit more proportional and that's the argument that I know is being made by the administration. In practice though, those two changes taken together mean that all but two of the meetings over the next municipal year will only have on the agenda items decided by the majority group. That means in those meetings, there'll be no right of opposition councillors to choose the topic of their questions and no right of opposition councillors to present a motion. I can't find a neighbouring borough that does it that way and I suspect there is a good reason for that. So coming back to the first point I made, we have a wealth of experience and views in this council. We have, I think it's fair to say, the full spectrum of Labour Party factions. We have strong Conservative voices for Chiswick and for Hanworth. We have two independents who, although our politics aren't the same, you could not fault them for their dedication to Brentford. With these changes, I'm worried that we will lose the ability for a lot of that diversity of views to really be heard during deliberation and decisions being made by this council. I think that will make us a poorer local authority and that's why I cannot support this report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Emesley. Councillor McGregor, please.
Well, fellow councillors, as Her Majesty, as her late... Oh, you want me to come round? Now, if I said to you Fred Carno, how many of you would actually understand that? No, no? Fred Carno was a comedian before the First World War and he had what was called an army and they were all clowns. So I feel like Fred Carno this evening. Thank you so much for inviting me to join you at the front. Coming back to the procedural rules of the council's constitution, I think we need to put some perspective on what we're talking about tonight because I can understand why people are getting very het up about the limitations that this means and given the fact the number of borough council meetings is limited. But then we had a moment ago the debate on pay policy and everyone was saying we have to work harder. Well, this prevents working harder because it doesn't give you any time to prepare or do stuff. You can't speak for five minutes. A good five-minute speech which is properly referenced will take you a couple of hours' work. It's worth it because we want to hear from you. But this will not happen in the future. We need to understand where it was in 2006 when councillor Elers was leader. He was committed, absolutely committed to debate. And then when we became the coalition administration in 2006, we freed up, because of the number of people from different parties and different grids, we freed up the constitution to enable everyone to have a chance to speak. And that meant we had debates. Now, between 2004 and 2006, my presentations to the council were very often foreshortened by the Labour chief whip who then would actually urge the council that I be not heard. That was a guillotine which was in use the whole time. That's a disgrace. Councillor Elers, in fact, abolished that as far as he could, but he was up against some fairly tough Labour characters in his own cabinet, own executive. The history of this is that when we had the coalition, the council became extremely liberal in its timings and we maintained the number of council meetings. We had the statutory meeting and the budget meeting, both which were without limit. We had the regular council meetings and we had the regular forum meetings. So by the time you'd finished, councillors were attending two meetings a month on average, plus their special duties. And when they got special duties, they were supported by good officers. That's the key thing, we had good officers, people with longstanding influence over the council. People understood how the council worked and they were very good at commandeering policy and understanding it. So when we had a new coalition administration in 2000... So when we had a new coalition administration in 2006, they had to learn again very quickly. And what we then did for them was to ensure that the council procedure was then enacted properly. Another issue, which in 2006 and 2010, if you'd come to the council meeting, you would have seen every director, every senior budget holder, and every member of the core management team attending the Borough Council. Because Mark Gilks, who was then the chief executive, was concerned about the nature of how we ran our constitution, and he wanted to ensure that directors were on hand to answer questions if things became tricky for the cabinet or executive members, they then were. This is history, but it's not dead history. This is live history, because there are people here in this chamber who remember that. It's important that that remembrance is not lost, this loses it. This is a systematic approach, this is almost crumpling in its approach. It's not good. It's not good. Watch out.
Madam Mayor, point of order, I think we might think about suspending standing orders, given the time.
We all agreed. Thank you. Councillor Stradturk, did you want to speak on this? Thank you.
I think I might. We've just heard that this move is to stifle debate and democracy. I think anybody watching this, what we've done today in this chamber, would say that democracy is alive and well in Hounslow, and debate is alive and well. I mean, we've had some marvellous speeches from here, and not so much there, but we've heard some pretty good speeches, and democracy is well. We can debate, and we can have debates. Coming to questions, I do seem to recall councillor Thompson, councillor Emsley, that in the working group, you didn't push back against removal of questions. But we've got ample opportunity, as we've seen tonight, to question reports and to question cabinet members on anything that they're bringing forward. Let's just turn to motions. There are 62 councillors in this council, and we have an opportunity for 12 motions per year. That's four councils where there are three motions. That's got to be done proportionately. And trust me on the arithmetic here, it means every councillor gets 0.19 of a motion. So if you take the current numbers in the chamber, and councillor Thompson said this, based on our current numbers, it's not great for you, because I'm afraid, and this is how democracy works, the voters of Hounslow in 2022 didn't want that many of you. So you only get a smaller number of motions. Now, just imagine if the opposition, and I'm just going to hypothesize here, in 2026, reduce the Conservatives, and I know that they've got confidence they won't, but let's say it's reduced to five Conservatives. Is it right that they still get a motion per council? No, of course it's not. Of course it's not. So it's got to be done on a proportion of the councillors you have in the chamber. The other thing I'd say, and I don't want to disagree with councillor Thompson, because he did go through the list of motions that they brought to council, but many of the motions that they bring do not really actually have an impact on what the council, and it says this in the constitution, they skirt, they skirt the constitution. Yes, they're important issues about what affects our residents, but we, as a council, have very little control over national policy, and they get round it by throwing a line in at the end that we write to a minister, or we adopt a policy that Hounslow opposes it. This is nonsense. It's quite, opposition motions are quite often used to attack national government policy with that little caveat, throw, well, you can laugh, guys, but you absolutely know it's the case. You use them to attack national government policy and score some cheap political points. That's all you do, cheap political points scoring. If you wrote a motion that actually improved the life of the residents of this borough, I think we'd probably support it, but generally, you do not. I can only say that this change reflects, reflects the composition of this chamber as we see it today. It may change in 2026, you may get more councillors, you may not. But in 2026, the number of motions that go to each group will change to reflect the makeup of this chamber, and on that basis, I would commend this report.
Thank you, councillor Stradturk. Councillor Todd, please.
I'm genuinely shocked by what the Chief Whip said. Could anyone say to me now, what benefit is there for someone who seeks the challenge to clarify and cut out ambiguity in this report? There's not one word of benefit. It's cover, obfuscation. Can I give you some details? I'm a great passion of scrutiny and others. I raised the lamp to concern some months ago, or even less. No one phoned me. I had a world with a senior officer who said he couldn't hear me in the chamber. I mean, I thought that was taking the liberty from me. We had a review of scrutiny by an outside organisation, and they said that our financial challenge is not of the highest. The Audit Committee, which I sit on, which is normally a valuable tool, it's not publicised, so the public can't see what we're trying to achieve or not achieve. I have a real issue about children in care, and I've raised it before, as Lily Bath would know. We have children in homes who are, I'm a corporate parent. The law requires an independent person to go to that home once a month and to report back to the lead member and the director of what they find. The director refuses to let anyone see that report or even talk of a summation. I'm not happy with that. I try and represent the sharp edge of our effectiveness. Treasury policy I'm not happy about. But what I'm really trying to say, you never know what's around the corner. And I remember having a strong argument with the late Steve Curran about the need to call in. We have, we have members now who are independent. If they want to call something in, they've got to get four people. Why, why does any party in power try and make the route so bloody difficult to establish facts? Those of you who follow the dreadful cases of indecency up north, the judge doing the review highlighted how scrutiny, I'm not suggesting this, but scrutiny and others become too close, who are sensitive to challenge. It's that, it's that cutting-edge stuff that we need to be as sharp on. I think with respect to John, you insulted the project, and I'll come back to my original point. What is there in this report that benefits me in my challenge of this administration? Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Councillor Dennison, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Once upon a time, there was a party, the Labour Party, which was a democratic party. But now, and this report, I think, very adequately shows it, it is now a party which is antipathetical to democracy. They have destroyed democracy within their own party. They've been in special measures for 50 years, completely incapable of running their own affairs in a demeuretic fashion. They've destroyed the democracy within their own Labour group. They've abolished the election of the, the annual election of the leader, they've abolished the election of cabinet members, they've abolished the election of the mayor indeed as well, Madam Mayor. And now, through this document, they're helping to destroy the rights of individual councillors to actually have a say on what is going on within their own wards. This is a very undemocratic shift by a very undemocratic party. And as a leader, you said, you know, I shouldn't throw stones if I can't do 15 items of casework in a four-year term. I did 18 before tea time today, so I'm going to claim my right to challenge you now. I'm going to challenge you. Can you, you have 50 backbenchers, can you get four, one-tenth of your backbenchers to speak in anything tonight? Because none of them have so far, that's two-thirds of the entire council, incapable of standing because they live in fear of what they may say wrong, because they haven't got the support, they haven't got the confidence of a supposed strong leader of their party. This is a pathetic Labour Party that does not believe in democracy in this chamber, in its party, in its group, and it doesn't respect the rights of residents to have councillors who will stand up and speak on behalf of them. So you do that for me, Shan. You get four of your backbenchers to stand up tonight and defend these changes.
Thank you, councillor Dennison. I'd now like to go to councillor Raduat Summa, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually going to start, councillor Todd, with your question. What is in this report that allows you your democratic right? And actually, there is nothing in this report that prevents your democratic right. It's your interpretation of it and the spin that you're placing on it that makes you believe that there is a prevention here. Actually, very little is changing. There are certain underlying principles here. Look, we are sat in Borough Council, it is the highest decision-making body of this council. We are here to decide the business of our residents. It is now 9.30, we have been sat here for two hours, and, see you, councillor man, and democracy is live and well. We've sat here for two hours, and we're not even on questions and motions yet, so anybody that says that democracy is dead, councillor Dennison, is living in a past world. Scrutiny is still very much welcome, the ability to question reports and the business of this council, as decision-making still exists, the ability to debate is not going away. And there is a fundamental point here, when councillor Stradturk talked about proportionality. Our opposition accept proportionality on membership of committees, they don't sit there and go, it's anti-democratic, that because there are fewer councillors, they have less seats on committees, and yet, when it comes to the same principles being applied on motions, they are complaining. And actually, I do agree with councillor Stradturk, whilst absolutely, I'm not going to say that you haven't brought some very good motions, that we have agreed with them, where we have, we do, a lot of the time, they are just point-scoring for the sake of point-scoring for, I'm afraid, their spin doctor who councillor Dennison wants to get rid of. But it's also, there is a broader point here that the opposition are willfully glossing over, and that is the ability to raise issues. If they are burning, and it's not our decision whether they go forward, it's the decision of the mayor and the monitoring officer to look at, is it in the public interest? Is that, is it really burning and urgent that we discuss those matters? That is enshrined within this constitutional review. But we need to be leaner, we need to get on with business, and we're not going to take lectures from former socialists who have now become populists.
Thank you, councillor Raduat. So I'd now like to move swiftly to the vote. There are three recommendations, including one in the supplementary paper. So I'd like to ask everyone in favour of the recommendations. Thank you. Everyone against? Thank you. And any abstentions? Lovely. So that has carried, and I'd like to thank everyone for their contributions. We move on to agenda item nine, appointment of independent members to the Audit and Governance Committee. Councillor Raduat, would you like to propose?
Yo-yo this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report seeks the approval of the appointment of two independent members to the Audit and Governance Committee, bringing the committee in line with SITF guidance. Having independent members on the committee, and it kind of comes back to councillor Todd's point around audit and governance, brings richness of views and challenge and scrutiny to the audit committees. The two members that we are seeking to appoint are very well-qualified. They, I believe, have either been chief finance officers in the private sector or in the public sector previously. That doesn't negate the need for training and development of audit committee members from amongst councillors, that will still carry on. But I believe that this is a very positive step, despite it also being a requirement of SITF guidance to bring richness to that committee, and I formally move the report.
Thank you, councillor Raduat. Do we have a second?
Happy to second and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Does anyone want to comment on this? We will have councillor McGregor, really.
No, not really, Madam Mayor, but I just wanted to give you a thrill by standing up again. Agenda item nine, everyone attending page 189. It's a very important motion this, because the Audit and Governance Committee needs high-quality independent members. The mini-CV we saw when we had the notification of this was very limited, and I'm wondering whether or not we shouldn't have a better standard of CV represented when we make this decision. I know that the people have got certain qualifications, and I'm sure that they've been well-chosen, but I would like, as always, to have some further proof. So I'm wondering whether we can ask Mike Pinder, head of Audit and Investigations, to be challenged by councillor Shantanu Raju to produce a better quality representation of the two individuals so we can understand more about them. I have absolutely no doubt that the representation they've made and the decision made to appoint them is a good one, but I would like to know more about them, because audit and governance is very close to my heart and close to the heart of all true Conservatives. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. So if nobody else wants to speak, if councillor Raduat would like to sum up?
No, Madam Mayor, just to...
Straight to the vote?
Well, just say councillor McGregor, absolutely happy to provide that afterwards. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so then we move straight to the vote on one recommendation. Votes for, please. And votes against? And any abstentions? Right, thank you very much. That's carried on to agenda item 10. We now come to appointments, which is a standing item on our agenda. May I draw members' attention to the nomination in the supplementary agenda pages? Okay, does everyone agree? Agreed, thank you. Councillor Gurowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of order for something earlier on, apologies, I was slightly late. With the declaration of interest, I just want to put out there that I'm a landlord in this borough alongside a lot of my colleagues here.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that agreed, we move on to agenda item 11, decisions taken under urgency arrangements. Please note the report listed on the agenda front sheet. Noted. Thank you very much. We move on to questions from members, agenda item 12. This is the part of the meeting where we deal with council questions. We have six this evening and a total of 45 minutes to deal with them. May I ask councillor Alan Joseph to ask the first question, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is with regard to the streetlights, dimming the streetlights. Can the cabinet member give an update? Which streets will be, will see dimmer streetlights?
Sorry, councillor Gurowell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And councillor Joseph? I have already answered this question previously in the last, but I'll still clarify things on this. The London Borough of Hounslow has to scrutinise all spend we currently incur in order to minimise our financial expenditures. This includes considering changes to the management of our streetlights. As part of the highway, PFI, all our streetlights between 2013 and 2017 were converted to energy-efficient LED lanterns with a new central management system for all our 16,000 lighting points. The council is committed to conducting detailed discussions and consult... The council is committed to conducting detailed discussions and consultations with all emergency services and members of the Hounslow Community Safety Partnership unit throughout the evaluation process. The safety of our residents and all road users in a borough continue to be our utmost priority and will be important during this evaluation process. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Geroel. Do you have a supplementary question, councillor Joseph?
No, me.
Thank you very much. In that case, we move on to the next question. And I would like to ask councillor Emsley to ask his question.
Yes, thank you very much, madam mayor. Given the recent decision to reduce road and pavement maintenance standards across the borough, what assessment has been made on the impact of dimmable lights and poorer road and pavement surfaces for cyclists and pedestrians?
Thank you, madam mayor. Councillor Emsley, my answer to this question is going to be no different to what I've just said. But I want to clarify that we are not reducing maintenance of our roads and pavements, but we are being more efficient. As far as the assessment for dimming of the lights, which will be done in consultation with the Met Police and the community safety teams. And I would also like to inform you that there will be a written reply to the petitions submitted by councillor Mashisha. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question, if you'd like to ask it?
Thank you, madam mayor. We are reducing road maintenance. It's in the budget. We're reducing the standards to national levels from where they were before. So I'm not entirely sure what that answer was. When I asked a similar question of councillor Geroel, you've... When I asked a similar question of councillor Geroel on this topic in June last year, he stated that cyclists were not at risk of potholes on residential roads because, and I quote, "there was greater visibility and therefore they could just manoeuvre around them." So given he now intends to reduce visibility on those residential roads by dimming streetlighting, does he have any new advice for cyclists and pedestrians who are concerned about their safety on those roads where he's reducing the maintenance?
Thank you, madam mayor. To be very honest, councillor Emsley, I stand to my previous answer, which I gave you in the previous Borough Council, that no. We will maintain the potholes and we will make the quality of our roads much better. And we are... Listen, you don't understand my point, what I'm trying to say. Okay? That I have... We have never made up...
Can we keep it civil, please?
That we are going to reduce the quality of our roads and pavements. We are going to be more efficient in how we maintain them. Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. The next question is councillor Bidolf to ask councillor Geroel.
Thank you. And councillor Geroel, I realise it was the leader who made the promise of a post-collection litter pick, but it's for you as cabinet member to implement his promise.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Bidolf. As far as street cleansing is concerned, the council continues discussion with Hounslow Highways on the future model of street cleansing. This is in the backdrop of saving council needs to achieve. However, as per Cabinet Budget twenty-five twenty-six, Report paragraph three point six, the council has committed to use chemicals to manage the ever-increasing weed growth in a borough. While Hounslow Highways prepares a programme of glycophosphate used as a general weed management for the first time since 2019, conversations continue on how an alternative street cleansing model will be sought, and I will bring that to the borough when we are finally decided.
Thank you, councillor Geroel. And do you have a supplementary question?
I do, yes. So I think then we're still at the point of this year, next year and some time. But I'm not sure that we haven't actually reached never, because that's not a commitment to litter picking. That was a comment on weeds. So I'd like to know what the council is going to do to tackle litter, particularly after waste and recycling collections that not only blights our roads and parks and neighbourhoods, but also blocks gullies and drains, causing surface flooding and ends up in rivers and canals, affecting water quality and damaging wildlife.
As far as the litter problem is concerned, we are doing our best to maintain the streets, keep them very clean and tidy. And we are working on a programme. And we are going to be very efficient in that. And the roads are kept clean. Well, you can say that by all means, because we don't have that many complaints about street cleansing. Right. Tell me, when was the last time you sent me an email regarding that? Give me an example.
I use casework. I use Fix My Street is where we reported.
Say, Fix My Street is something you report on a litter. But if you want to make a complaint, you should come to the cabinet member.
Thank you both for your contributions. I would now like to ask Theo Dennison to ask his question of councillor Raduat.
Thank you, madam mayor. And thank you for that commitment, Shivraj. Yeah, my question is, would the leader of the council consider abolishing the post of chief whip and support a ban on the use of the whip and the threat of deselection as a means of silencing members of the council and preventing them from speaking freely on matters of concern to their constituents?
Thank you, madam mayor. Thank you, Theo, for your question. Slight smoke and mirrors, if you believed everything that was in Theo's question, you'd have a very different view of the whip, I'm afraid. He's not been quite upfront. So I just wanted to start by clarifying and being absolutely clear on the role of the whip. The whip does a lot of different roles. For us, and I won't speak for the opposition group, because I don't know whether it's different or not, but certainly for us, the whip is in charge of training and member development. He arranges a number of away days for the Labour Group and facilitates a number of discussions on key policy areas as we get to the manifesto. That will also be something that John, in this case, or the chief whip, will assist with. They act as pastoral care. So where there are issues, where people have genuine issues, and that sometimes can be personal life, because we know that personal life can get in the way. It is the whip that assists where possible and signposts members to support that might well be needed. Coordination of the smooth running of the council. And I know our whip talks to the opposition whip quite regularly, and that helps facilitate meetings like this. And yes, there is an element of discipline. But I don't make any apologies for working in a rules-based environment. He used to at one point as well, until he rejected that. And, you know, to his claim, and we have to correct the claim here about silencing members, I say to you, councillor Dennison, look around at these fifty councillors. Do any of them look scared to you? Because they really don't look scared at all. In fact, even the opposition councillors, and as much as I could say about councillor Strad Turp and councillor Elmsley, I'm sorry, I'm including you in this, executioners, you are not. Look, the point here is councillor Dennison wants people to believe that I am some sort of juggernaut that silences you all, you should all sit quietly. How dare you? How dare you smile? How dare you? But actually, we have space for discussion, for debate, where there are issues that exist, where there are people who are unhappy with anything that I am proposing in my group. They have the space here, and that is why they vote the way they do, because they fundamentally agree with the agenda that we are carrying. And I just want to take this opportunity to remind councillor Dennison about the work that these fifty Labour councillors are doing to represent the residents of this borough properly. Building new homes, so we've got Brentford Waterside in his ward, New Row Triangle, Frank Towell, Rose Gardens and Burlington Close, thousands of new homes for residents that are in desperate need of it. Supporting our school system so that the GCSE and A-level results outperform national and London averages. Delivering one point nine million pounds of funding for community and voluntary groups in the borough, acknowledging that we can't do all the work on our own. One point six million pounds funding for Hounslow Citizens Advice Service and investing in our community hubs. These scared people have facilitated four thousand six hundred and thirty-five local residents receiving support in our community hubs and three thousand nine hundred in our family hubs. Does that look like we're not representing local residents, councillor Dennison? You can at least have the decency to look up and look at them.
Thank you, councillor Raduat. Councillor Dennison, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. And to answer your description, leader, of very much party roles rather than functions that serve the interests of either taxpayers or the council. And actually, I'd hate to suggest that any of the Labour members didn't have a work ethic. Anybody who'd seen how much work they put in to try and keep me off the council over the last few months will absolutely know that on one thing they are united and hardworking, which is how to get themselves into power. And that's the only thing they work really hard to.
Question?
Yeah, my question really is, would the leader support any measures to encourage these fine members of the Labour Party to speak freely and publicly on behalf of residents? And if so, what?
Councillor Dennison, you really ought to listen to the answer. There is no stop. They can speak freely now. There really isn't a barrier. And quite frankly, to go after the whip is quite shameful. Once upon a time, you were a Labour councillor. You held the portfolio that I held alongside the leadership, which included governance. And during that time, because it suited your purposes, you chose not to get rid of the whip. So it's really rich of you now to come back and try and attack us just because the whip that exists to promote discipline was coming after you.
Thank you for your contributions. I'd like to move on to the next question. Aisha Terry has a question, which was for Samir Chowdhury. I understand councillor Raduat will be answering.
Thank you, madam mayor. Could the cabinet member please provide an update on the outcome of school admission in the borough? And how many Hounslow students receive and offer one of their preferred secondary schools? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tariq, for your question. I hope you weren't scared to ask it. So in Hounslow, of course, we're naturally really proud that all of our secondary schools are recognised by us as either outstanding or good. So I'm absolutely thrilled that families and students who have secured placements in their preferred school this September. So figures released by the Pan London Admission Board, responsible for the coordination of school admissions across local authorities in London, have again proved positive for parents, pupils and educational professionals in Hounslow. Whilst the figures break down into numbers, and I'm happy to provide that to council later on, if I can give broad percentages at this point, ninety-six point oh one percent received one of their top six preferences. And that breaks down to ninety-one point oh four receiving one of their top three preferences. And for context, that is up two percent on 2024. And seventy-one point two nine percent received their first preference. So their very first preference, and that's a rise of four percent on 2024. Of course, I think across the chamber, we would say our schools continue to be something that we are proud of, providing a solid and sought-after experience for children across the borough. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Raduat. Do you have a supplementary question?
No, madam mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. So thank you both for your contribution. And the next question is councillor Germa Lal for councillor Shaheen.
Thanks, madam mayor. Libraries are a huge asset to our borough and serve as an important community hub for our residents across Hounslow. What improvement is the cabinet member making to the library service to ensure better access to all our residents?
Thank you, councillor Shaheen.
Thank you very much, councillor Lal, for your question. I'm very proud of our library service here in Hounslow. And that's a credit to my predecessors in this role. It's a credit to the officers that have steered a very tight ship with our library service over the many years. I'm particularly proud that while many councils around the country have had to cut their library services and close libraries during austerity, we have not only kept all ours open, but we're enhancing our library service as well. We've already... National reports show we've already got some of the best library access in this country. But we're going further than that as well. We're giving our libraries a digital upgrade. Members can now access one point two million eBooks and audiobooks for free, plus thousands of digital newspapers and magazines. And we're also transforming our libraries into community hubs, where people can come and get the support they need, as well as borrow the books they need. This started with Meadowbank in Cranford, but that is just the start. It's a programme we're going to be rolling out throughout the course of this year. And there's plenty more to come on that. And I look forward to giving updates in due course.
Thank you, councillor Shaheen. Councillor Lal, do you have a supplementary question?
No, madam mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you both. So we now move on to motions. Agenda item eighteen. There are three motions listed on the agenda for consideration this evening, and only thirty minutes in which to discuss them. So may I ask members to bear this in mind when making their contributions? However, as members will see in the supplementary agenda, an amendment has been provided in relation to the first motion. And consequently, the third motion on the agenda, as agenda item twenty, has been withdrawn. I'm grateful the two main political... So the two main political groups for working together to find a sensible way forward tonight and to allow the council to have a single constructive debate on an important issue. We therefore move on to the first motion, which can be found at agenda item eighteen. And I invite councillor Shanty Raduat to propose.
And thank you very much, madam mayor. And thank you to the opposition for working with us on, actually, what is a very similar motion. So I will be very brief to set just a little bit of context to the motion, as will soon be amended, I'm sure, around what is quite topical at the moment and a very important topic right on our doorstep. As well, as we know, Rachel Reeves and the government of the day are very, very focused on growth and national infrastructure is a big part of that. And the Chancellor has made announcements signalling support for expansion at Heathrow. As a council, we have long held a view. We take a view based around two perhaps competing juxtapositions. The environmental impact around Heathrow, which I know colleagues will speak about, that is very, very important to us. And some of that discussion was borne out earlier in the transport strategy debate. But also the economic benefit, thirteen thousand people directly employed by Heathrow. And we saw during the pandemic, when Heathrow closes down, the impact it has on local communities and the local economy as well. And so we have historically taken the view that we want a better, not bigger Hounslow... A Houn... Hounslow. Heathrow, sorry, it's been a long evening. I've spoken a lot. Bigger not be... No, better not bigger Heathrow. I keep getting that wrong. I apologise. That what does work for our communities works for our environment. And there is a lot of work that is happening in there, and I'm sure this will be borne out in the debate. I regularly meet with the chief executive of Heathrow. And our conversations aren't just about the economy. They are about Heathrow's environmental footprint and the work that they are doing to try and decarbonise and play their part in terms of the environment, but also what they are doing in terms of economic activity and providing not just jobs for our local residents, but careers as well. There is a... Whilst the initial announcements have been made, there is a lot still to come out, and there's a lot of detail that we need to pour over and understand over the next few months. But I think it is really important as a council, we reaffirm our historic view on what we want from Heathrow. And that's a Heathrow that works for the best interests of Hounslow in its totality. So with that, I move the motion.
Thank you, councillor Raduat. Councillor Dunn, would you like to second?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, I'll second the motion and echo many of the things that councillor Raduat has already said. As has been noted, Hounslow's position on Heathrow has long been better, not bigger. And this position remains the right one. Whilst we welcome and embrace the positive aspects of Heathrow, we know it impacts negatively on our residents too. Noise, air pollution and increased traffic, to name a few. More recently, we have come to understand the climate impact of airport expansion. More recently, we have come to understand the climate impacts of airport expansion. While we welcome new developments in sustainable aviation fuel and one day perhaps electric planes, it will be a long time before these are commonplace, meaning that airports and flight emissions will have to be offset for decades to come. Embracing expansion at multiple UK airports therefore is not in line with UK climate objectives. I know that other colleagues are going to speak about other issues, and I don't wish to prolong this debate unnecessarily, especially where we are for once in agreement. I will just note that I regularly attend the Heathrow Strategic Planning Group meetings and also the Council for the Independent Scrutiny of Heathrow Airport. And I'll continue to work constructively with those groups to ensure that we get the best outcome for residents. And in that vein, I very much welcome the amendment from the Conservatives to work cross-party with councillors, MPs, Mayor of London and so on. I know you're going to speak about it, but just to say that I welcome that and would very much want to take that forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dunn. So we'll move straight to the proposed amendment, and I invite councillor Thompson to introduce it.
Thank you, thank you, madam mayor, and thank you for the proposal and the seconding. In moving this amendment, it's good actually to be speaking in defence, I suppose, of Hounslow's wonderful legacy and history and traditions on this topic. I'm also speaking, I suppose, I'm trying to wrap all the speech together, so I'm covering the amendment and the main one as it goes forward, yeah? Also, we're talking tonight, aren't we, about our residents' wellbeing? And we are talking, as councillor Dunn said, about environmental responsibility. And it's good, I think, to make the case again, as this motion does, why the policy going forward has to be, and I also got this wrong when we submitted the motion, it has to be better and not bigger. Yeah, I don't know what is wrong with that one. Just doesn't work, does it? Yeah. So we are here again in January 2025, when the current Labour government confirmed its support. And this follows decades of shifting views on Heathrow expansion. Gordon Brown said it was going to happen back in 2009. And then in 2018, Theresa May's government had a vote and that went forward. And then now it's back with Rachel Reeves. So it's ebbed and flowed. As I mentioned, I suppose, that coalition government did say, it's not happening, no ifs, no buts. So the views have changed nationally. But throughout that, Hounslow's position has always been very clear and consistent and principled. I can remember in 2006, we sort of co-launched a group called the 2M Group. That was a snappy title, along with Hillingdon, Richmond and Wandsworth, which was a coalition of cross-party councils, who actually grew to end up representing 26, I think, councils. And the 2M was over 2 million people we represented to campaign against expansion and the third runway. That took us to 2010, when this council agreed to join in the legal fight. And we went to the High Court to challenge the decision of Gordon Brown's government, not out of ideology, but out of necessity. And it was councillor Reed who we appointed alderman last year, who led that particular campaign, again, cross-party. And we did, with other councils, green groups, local residents, we stood firm and our views made a difference. So again, we've got the same arguments, the same debates as we've had throughout those 25 years and I'm sure beyond, of more planes, more noise, more pollution, and yet more pressures on our community. But we know, as the leader said, Hounslow is important, sorry, Heathrow is important to Hounslow, it does bring real benefits. It's that major employer. It drives local business. It does support tourism into the country, skills, community projects. And we acknowledge that. The slogan has always been better and not bigger and never shrink Hounslow or shift Hounslow and float it in the sea, as someone once mentioned, I think, once upon a time. I can't remember who that was. But a third runway expansion would come with a real cost, okay? So it's also good tonight, just to again be a bit cross-party, to remember two people who between 2006 and 10, when I was leader of the council, and then after that, when Labour took control again, and also before 2006, who did so much. So councillor Barbara Reid, a former elder woman, what is that we call them? Older woman, Reid. Well, elder, she won't mind me saying that. I hope you're not watching Barbara. Yeah, she's elder and older, but we all are, right? She was a major force in leading that campaign. I can remember pushing prams with my small children when they were very small, when we all, you know, tens of thousands of us walked around the perimeter of Heathrow. When we stood in a field somewhere in Hillingdon, making out the word no that was taken from sort of, it wasn't drone in those days, I think it was just a big crane.
One minute.
And also planting an orchard, which I think still exists in the poor village that will disappear. And then councillor Cadbury, obviously, also now a MP for a big chunk of this borough, who has always been consistent, always been hardworking on this topic. So this is just, this motion, as hopefully it's accepted and amended, is agreeing, as councillor Dunn reminded us, it's agreeing to work cross-party, it's agreeing to work with our MPs, mayor of London, assembly member. As I said, it's not anti-growth. We do support investment. We want this part of London where we live to be more prosperous. We want Hounslow to be a leading borough in London, but we need a balance. We need to continue with our long-seated position, backed by science, backed by justice and backed by the people we serve. So Heathrow again, I'll say it a third time lucky, Heathrow again should be better and not bigger. We should fight excess noise increase. We should campaign for cleaner air and greener aviation. Aviation. Thank you, madam.
Thank you.
That was a real mess, anyway.
I'd now like to ask councillor Giles to second the amendment.
Thank you, madam mayor. And if you don't mind, I'll speak. Beware the heights of March is something that's come to mind as of this meeting. And while there may not have been an assassination tonight, well, potentially not physically, it certainly feels that there's been a bit of a character assassination as being mislabelled as climate deniers. I'm not complaining about proportionality in committee, even if it is a legal obligation. But it is easy to throw out accusations when the people you're accusing don't have the right of reply due to the format of debate in this place. So I'm hoping you'll forgive my little digression, and I won't belabour this too much. So I thank you for your indulgence. I love a good musical reference. And in reading the original motion, I've had Lin-Manuel Miranda's voice as Alexander Hamilton in my head, specifically that line that he says to the man who assassinated him, Aaron Burr, "If you stand for nothing, then what will you fall for?" And obviously, we're so into political point scoring tonight, that we, as opposing parties, have brought forward two motions that are remarkably similar in intent, but I'd argue that one is a little bit more robust in drawing the line in the sand than the other, but, you know. However, I'm here to second a proposed amendment which should revisit and renew the historical alignment on this topic. As we've already heard from councillor Thompson, we've had a really strong track record of working collaboratively on this issue. And I'm also keen to look into how we work collaboratively with residents. The last full consultation on Heathrow Airport was done in 2019. And as we know, travel behaviour and patterns have changed. And while we are keen to revisit the discussion around the airport, I would like to recommend that we hold a new consultation in Hounslow on Heathrow, which can help to shape our policy and our approach. In researching past consultations on this topic, I was unfortunately unable to find Hounslow's response to the consultation. So I won't bore you about my woes with the weaknesses of the search function on the website. I've already spoken to Thomas Ribbons about it today. But I'd like to highlight some of the proposed changes from 2019 that do leave me with cause for concern, such as plans to lower the M25, especially, I should say, cause for concern, especially from an environmental perspective. So these include plans to lower the M25 for the third runway to cross, plans to reroute rivers and water bodies, and as we know, I'm a great advocate for those, plans, thanks, John, plans to remove swathes of green belt land for airport buildings, plans for a new supersized car park to provide even more on-airport car parking than today, a proposal to introduce a ultra-low emission zone, proposals to introduce a 6.5-hour ban on scheduled night flights, proposals to seek the removal of current planning caps, or the then-current planning caps, of 480,000 annual aircraft transportation movements at Heathrow, which was actually part of the planning permission for the fifth terminal in 2001. And concurrently, permission requests from Heathrow Airport Limited to expand the two-runway airport in advance of opening the proposed third runway by an extra 25,000 flights each year. There were also proposals for environmentally managed growth, environmental impacts for the expansion proposals, proposals for mitigation and compensation, noise, both noise and property, and the presentation of a new prepared airport masterplan. So there's a lot of stuff in there that I don't feel like we've yet come to grips with, one, the airport's trying to do, and how that will actually impact our residents. So with that in mind, and knowing that we don't have those detailed plans, I really encourage the opportunity to have these further discussions, so much so that I believe it merits us spending the time, money and effort to understand what our residents want across the whole borough, and what we want from our aviation neighbours by launching a standalone consultation that can help us inform any further ideas. And I'm sure we'll all have a lot of ideas to suggest in figuring out how we can get a better, not bigger Heathrow that helps to create a sustainable relationship across our borough. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Giles. Councillor Radjwat, do you agree with the proposal to amend the motion?
Yes, madam mayor, I do.
Thank you. So I now invite members to debate this motion. Okay. Okay, Amy Croft, please.
Thank you very much, madam mayor. Just a very quick one from me. So firstly, I wanted to say I'm not afraid to speak either here in this chamber or perhaps at the Chiswick area forum, where I was forbidden to speak as in my role as cabinet assistant to introduce the health discussion. Nor am I afraid to speak to my colleagues on the opposition if they want to ask me about my role as a cabinet assistant. Always welcome to have that conversation. Anyway. So the government have highlighted absolutely the need for increased capacity to boost economic growth. And why do they need to do that? They need to do that because of the last 14 years of a Tory government and the economic state of the country. So in an ideal world, we wouldn't need to do it. But we're mindful of the impact that this may have on the lives of our residents and on the environment. And so we still stand for a better, not bigger, and will continue to work with stakeholders, government, Heathrow, to make sure we mitigate any effects on our residents. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you councillor Croft. Councillor Mashiso, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. Right. I'm delighted with this motion that we've all agreed on. But before I go any further, I want to pay tribute, and I'm sure the whole of the chamber would like to join me, to the firefighters who recently helped to stop the blaze around the electrical substation in Hayes. So I really want to put that on record, paying homage to those firefighters. Thank you. Yes, better Heathrow is what we all want, and I'm glad we're all in agreement here. But better can also mean quite a lot of things for this administration. I was indeed there in 2006 with councillor Thompson, councillor Reed, Baroness Kramer and others, who were there at the old Hounslow house, I've forgotten the name of it now, but Civic Centre, is it? That's it. Such a long time ago, 2006. And I remember holding a placard that said, "No third runway, no mixed mode." And I, nothing has changed my mind then. I'm open to my mind being changed, but nothing suggests otherwise. Why? Because I think a better Heathrow will mean more jobs. A better Heathrow will mean reducing noise pollution. A better Heathrow will mean reducing air pollution. And a better Heathrow would mean actually integrating a traffic and transport strategy that works not only for Hounslow, but works for the whole area around Heathrow. And I think that's what we were missing earlier with the transport strategy, where it came a bit short. But however, we know that technology is something that is with us and is changing the way we work, the way we operate. So I expect that a better Heathrow will also mean that we use some of the technologies that are available to us so that we can provide more jobs for our local area and make Heathrow Airport the envy of the world as a port for people coming and going to Europe and so on. Now, because we are for pro-growth and pro-jobs and pro-business, I am delighted that my colleagues on the Labour benches agree with us that we should never be anti-growth. Thank you, madam mayor.
Madam mayor, point of order, if I might. Given we've been going just over 20 minutes now, may I move suspension of standing orders for the motions? Otherwise, we will stifle debate, which we clearly do not want to do in this chamber.
Seconded and agreed. Lovely. Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you councillor Mashiso. Councillor Sharma, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'll be very quick, because everyone has basically said, you know, what we've all said. So as a councillor living near, close to Heathrow, you know, we need to focus on the growth, you know? Every one of us has used Heathrow, every one of us has someone within the family that maybe have worked for Heathrow or worked for Heathrow, or ourselves, you know? I can remember, as a young lady, I worked for a company that provided food to Heathrow. That was one of my starting jobs. So, but what we need to do is to ensure that they're not just jobs, they are careers. That, I know councillor Bruce earlier on was talking about the children of the future. We need jobs and careers for the children of our future. We need apprenticeships. We need, you know, more community engagement. And so with that, you know, I'm, you know, bigger, better, not bigger. It's been so long, I've been at work all day. So better, not bigger.
Thank you councillor Sharma. Councillor McGregor, please.
I have a very great concern about the issue of better, not bigger, mainly because we have residents in the southern part of my ward, which is Chiswick Homefields, that includes Stably Gardens. That includes Stably Gardens. And this is a very large residential mixed series of blocks, some council blocks, but a lot in private hands and built in private hands. And they are subject to the most horrendous noises because when an aircraft comes into land on the southern runway, that's the runway next to Terminal Four, the direct line into Terminal Four's runway, which is the southern runway of Heathrow, flies, of course, over that part of Chiswick. And the point there is very simple. That's the point at which the pilots drop the undercart and pull out the airliners to actually increase the wingspan so that the plane stays manageable. It's a very important part of the safety procedures in landing. But the problem with that is that the engines then wind down very quickly. That whine you sometimes hear is the whining of the engine coming down because the fuel's been limited, and the plane is now stopping in the air, as it were, because the undercart's down. What then happens is the pilot resumes control by increasing the engine revs in order to maintain progress. That's typical landing. The only difficulty with that is that sometimes the engines spill out kerosene jet fuel, and it lands in very small, tiny droplets, and kerosene jet fuel is carcinogenic. The other is, of course, is the noise, the noise pattern. So mixed mode, and then the agreements that were had in the past seem to have disappeared. So people are now getting woken up at half past five in the morning or earlier by planes coming in. I know that it was a blessed relief when Heathrow closed because people got their first good night's sleep for years. Now, this is the issue that we need to face. There are lots of issues that we face in Chiswick. Now, those of you who are committed to Heathrow, absolutely fine. But I also bring to your attention the fact that our neighbouring borough, Hillingdon, will bear the bunt of the construction of Terminal X to go will bear the bunt of the construction of Terminal X to go with One Way Three. And this will be disruption going on for many years. Now, given how long it took to build HS Two, which has not yet been completed, I have severe doubts about the capacity of any government to actually institute the appropriate processes to make sure we get a speedy response for One Way Three. And the other issue, of course, is, but by the stage we get to One Way Three, as councillor Dunn quite rightly pointed out, there is a chance that we might have battery-driven aircraft. We might end up with no pollution. And of course, we might also take account of the fact that we're now opening up the Eurotunnel to competition, and the number of trains going to foreign capitals in Europe will double. And that is a mode of transport which is highly valuable because, of course, as we all know, the majority of these international trains end up in town centres where the amount of traffic and travel you have to do to get to your destination within a city is quite limited. It's a boon. So we need to consider all sorts of issues in the strategy, some of which we should have put into our transport strategy for Hounslow. But the important thing about it is that we've got to take our responsibilities as a council very carefully. We have got to weigh up all these issues. I hope that I can convince all of you that weighing it up doesn't mean taking sides at this stage. Bigger, better, better, bigger. Well, perhaps a deal of thought and consideration might be better than shouting slogans. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. Councillor Joseph, next, please, and then after that, I'm going to go to councillor Rajuat to sum up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was not intended to speak today. However, as a resident and a councillor of the constituency of Hertfordshire, I know how important Heathrow is to our community. It's not just an airport, it's a major source of jobs for our people. That's why it's crucial that we get the balance right between supporting its growth and protecting our residents from its environmental impacts. Both our motions reflect the delegate balance we must strike between maximising the benefits of Heathrow's operation and mitigating the potential negative effects such as environmental impact, noise and air pollution. As much as we acknowledge the airport's contribution to economic growth, we must remain committed to ensuring that the voices of our residents are heard and that their concerns are addressed. It is about working together. Our amendments call for a cross-party effort, and I am glad this is accepted, involving local MPs, the mayor and the community groups to ensure Heathrow works in the best interest of our residents. We want to see Hounslow benefit from the economic opportunities Heathrow provides without sacrificing the quality of life of our residents. We must focus on job creation, efficiency and sustainability so that we can continue to grow while also protecting our environment and reducing noise and pollution. We should be committed to working with all stakeholders to make sure the right investments are made and that any changes are in the best interest of the people of this borough. It's not about opposing progress, it's about making sure that progress works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Joseph. Councillor Rajuat, please.
I think councillor Joseph actually summed up quite well, actually. It's that fine balance. And I think to councillor Giles, your point, I don't disagree with anything you said, but I think there is plenty more that's going to be coming out. I think what we're basing our assumptions on is some of what was said at the last time this was on the table. I think the world is in a very different place. Heathrow are in a very different place as well. And so by agreeing this motion, not only are we stating our intent, but we're also being very clear with our residents that this is something that we're monitoring very, very closely, and these conversations will continue. So I want to thank all colleagues from across the chamber for their contributions. I think it has been a good rounded debate. And of course, we will come back in due course once we know more. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rajuat. So if we could now move to the vote. Everyone in favour of the recommendations? That's wonderful. Everyone against? Any abstentions? Okay, then that motion is carried. Thank you very much. And we move on to the second motion. And yeah, just so you know, we have just over half an hour before we have to finish the meeting.
Madam Mayor, on a point of order, I refer to 12.2, the right to require the motion in writing. And I point out the third paragraph of this motion being presented, which says, 'Everyone has the right to a safe and secure home which is the basis for them proposer and enjoy their lives free from harassment and fear'. There's a printing error or a parsing error or someone didn't do the spell checker correctly. I presume that's the one that's been presented tonight. This council believes, it's the third paragraph, two lines, and it appears to be mistyped. So I want this in writing. What is it? What are we meant to be voting for?
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to clarify in my opening.
Thank you. So yeah, councillor Bruce, if you could propose and clarify. Thank you.
I certainly shall, I certainly shall. We've had quite a lot of history this evening. I hope people indulge me. A personal story, a personal historical story from me. When I was about 15, it was after school and I was hanging out with a few friends, and slowly but surely, a few people drifted off. It was left with me and someone else. So I knew kind of from school, I was not one of those people I knew very well, but I can remember we were talking about something and he said, 'Oh, why don't you come back to my house? We'll play computer games or something'. So off we go. I'd never been to his house before. Go in, loads of boxes around, stuff in boxes, stuff all up the stairs. So when I started playing, I got the computer. And I sort of flippantly said something about, 'Oh, you're moving soon', or 'You've just arrived', or something like that. And he sort of looked at me and said, 'Well, actually a bit of both. We've just arrived, but I'm not really sure, we're not really sure whether we're going to have to move again'. And I was stunned by this, didn't really know what to say. And he said, and I don't know, I don't think he was being cruel, but it was very poignant. You don't know what it's like to worry about your home, do you? And you know what? He was absolutely right. I didn't, absolutely not. And that was 25 years ago, and that conversation and that moment has never left me. And it's one of the things that absolutely drives me as a councillor. And it's why this motion really matters to me. At its heart, this motion is about place and belonging and about safety and security. Growing up in Heston, I had a very real sense of place, a real sense of belonging. I felt secure and safe. And that conversation, maybe really for the first time, made me realise not everyone felt or feels that way. What we know in this borough, it has thousands of good quality homes. It has many landlords who are responsible and work to deliver safe and secure housing for people. But what we also know is there are far too many homes that are in extremely poor standard and that far too many landlords fail to meet their obligations. Saying 'we believe everyone has the right to a safe and secure home' is more than simply warm words. Our actions previously, in this motion and in the future, will demonstrate that we mean it. What it says here, and should say actually, is everyone has the right to a safe and secure home which is the basis for them to prosper and enjoy their lives free from harassment and fear. So our actions, what have we done? What will we do? Well, last week, hopefully, people saw that we published a fine that was issued to a rogue landlord. And this was repeated a few times by a few journalists and appeared in My London earlier this week. We've introduced an Article Four direction on HMOs across the borough. There have been many previous fines issued through planning enforcement and issued to rogue landlords. Our aims here, what we're talking about now, aim to continue and enhance the additional HMO licensing scheme. It helps us better manage and take action on HMOs in our borough. And we're also working with the government on providing more money towards affordable homes, something which I hope comes forward very, very soon. As I said near the beginning, the heart of this motion is about place, belonging, safety and security. And for many of us, including me, including that 15-year-old self, this is something that we take for granted. But while a minority, there are far too many who cannot. And this is why this motion matters, and I urge members to support it. I move the report.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. Councillor Sampson, would you like to second the report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to second the report, and I'd just like to say a few words. I fully support and second this motion. For the people to be part of a community, they need to have a place in the community. And the most important part of that is having a safe and secure place to call home. This motion reaffirms this council's commitment that no tenant living across the borough should live in a substandard or unsafe accommodation or face harassment by their landlords. I host a cabinet surgery, housing surgery, weekly here at Hounslow House, and I speak to many residents who have concerns about their accommodation, and rogue landlords is very much a hot topic. I will repeat, everyone has the right to a safe and secure home which is the basis for them to prosper and enjoy their lives free from harassment and fear. And I will ensure the council keeps up its fantastic work to protect our residents from those who wish to benefit from their suffering. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Now I'd like to move to the debate, and I'd like to ask councillor Mosley, if you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm delighted to make my first contribution today and to do so while speaking in favour of a motion on such an important topic. Before I do so, may I quickly thank the people of Brentford East for their support by electing me as their councillor to serve alongside councillor Sharma, and also for their continued support for this Labour council. May I also thank the warm wishes from members across the aisle in welcoming to this place. Today, I had the opportunity to not only speak in favour of this motion on behalf of the people of Brentford East, but also as one of the youngest councillors here, I hope I can also speak on behalf of Generation Rent, who are sadly all too familiar with the concept of rogue landlords. Sadly, as we've heard today, everybody has some interaction with a rogue landlord, either directly or through someone that they know. Throughout the past few weeks, talking to thousands of residents, I heard how impactful housing issues can be on someone's life. From withheld deposits to neglected maintenance, issues big and small can become a dominant issue that can place a cloud over people's lives. Living through a housing crisis is hard enough on people's standard of living. But having people in the system seeking to profit from others' hardship makes the situation worse, and it is immoral. Therefore, I was delighted to see our council take a proactive approach with the recent enforcement against a rogue landlord. I suspect people in the borough who are sadly dealing with their own problematic landlord will be reassured to see this issue taken so seriously by their council. I encourage us to keep going, to support our affected residents, to send a message that the London Borough of Hounslow is not a place for rogue landlords. I look forward to supporting this council in any way in tackling this issue, and I welcome this motion.
Thank you, councillor Mosley. Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's be very clear, this motion, if you've taken sport, it's a matter, isn't it, law and safety and human decency? There are landlords, as we all acknowledge and have said, in this borough, a minority, yes, but there are landlords in this borough who are stuffing vulnerable tenants into dangerous overcrowded properties, ignoring fire safety, ignoring regulation and ignoring, as I said, common sense and decency. It's not just bad business, it's immoral, as councillor Mosley said. It's criminal, and it has to stop. And that's why we're fully behind councillor Bruce and the work of the council. You know, again, as a Conservative, things like personal responsibility, rule of law, trying to protect our communities and the fabric of our society really matter to me, as they do to all people in this chamber tonight. And rogue landlords, I think as councillor Sampson said, they tear apart our community, they exploit the vulnerable, they drag down neighbourhoods and make them unpleasant for everybody with their antisocial behaviour and the unsafe housing. And again, it's very clear, this motion is not attacking the good landlords. I did quite smile this, at the beginning of the meeting, when we had to declare interests on rogue landlords, and all these hands went up. And I was thinking, that's a lot of rogue landlords who go in Hounslow. But obviously, it took me a moment to work, it's been a long day at school, it took me a moment to work it out. Anyway, but I did initially appreciate your honesty for being rogue landlords, but you're not. Anyway, I'm waffling, it's late. But we must, yeah, we must support the decent ones, which is obviously all you liked, put your hands up earlier tonight. But we have to be unapologetically tough, as I think councillor Bruce, you were, with the dodgy ones. Zero tolerance, no loopholes, no turning a blind eye because, well, for whatever reasons, we might be tempted to do that. So again, this motion is standing up for tenants, for families and for all those things that really matter to most people in this country, the good people in this country, which is safety, fairness and accountability and doing the right sort of thing. And hopefully, I know not a lot of folks watched this on the webcast and all the rest of it, but hopefully the message is beginning to get out to the dodgy, bad rogue landlords. And they hear this loud and clear from this local authority that their time is up. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Cameron, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I stand today in full support of this vital motion addressing rogue landlords and protecting tenants' rights. The private rented sector plays a crucial role in our borough, providing homes for a significant portion of our residents. The majority of landlords act responsibly, adhering to their legal obligations and working together with the council. However, it is the minority of rogue landlords who tarnish the sector reputation and explore vulnerable tenants by offering substandard, unsafe and often hazardous accommodation. This is simply unacceptable. The council commitment to taking a zero-terrorist approach to these practices is commendable. By utilising the full range of enforcement power, including formal warnings, civil penalties and legal action, we can hold unethical landlords accountable. The figure speaks for themselves. 937 warnings, 652 safety notices and 51 civil penalty fines demonstrates the council's firm resolve. This sends a clear message, rogue landlords will not be tolerated. Furthermore, the proposed expansion of HMO licensing is a necessary and welcome step, including smaller HMOs and large purpose-built flats in the scheme will help close loopholes, ensuring that more properties met proper safety and quality standards. This not only protects tenants but also promotes fairness and accountability across the rental sector. In conclusion, everyone has the right to a safe and secure home free from harassment and fear. By supporting this motion, we affirm our commitment to defending tenants' rights, promoting responsible property management and creating a fairer, safer rental market for all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cameron. Councillor Biddof, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are very serious points to this motion, of course. One outcome is that it should put effort into promoting a consultation. Promoting consultations should be fundamental and core actions, even though, as has so often been the case, residents know their views will be ignored. In this case, I hope it includes writing to all tenants, letters through doors will have to be delivered or posted, of HMOs on the register to ask them for their views. We shouldn't just get the views of neighbours and other people who are concerned, like we all are, about what might be going on behind closed doors. And we might, should also be asking people to put forward any suggestions of addresses where there might be HMOs but they're not on the register, because those are people who are even more seriously at risk. I had already promoted the HMO consultation to residents of Chiswick-Gunsbury Ward who have complained about badly managed HMOs, their complaints resulting in raising standards or fines. I've also already responded, based on the experience of residents in Chiswick-Gunsbury Ward... Ward, of which I'm one. I feel strongly that the proposals as published do not go far enough. When the proposal was made to require HMO landlords to apply for planning permission to change their properties into HMOs, I expressed doubts that it would make any difference and it hasn't, certainly not in Chiswick-Gunsbury Ward. Inevitably, freeholders have seen how to work their way round the new rules, applying for small changes incrementally until they get to the point where they've developed a house into an HMO, that it is then very difficult to turn down. Residents know how the houses they live in can be adapted to HMOs and can spot what's going on. They alert planning to this. After approving seemingly individual changes, residents believe that an application from an HMO will follow with no reason for planning to say no. No one is against the principle of HMOs. As I've said before, all the flats I shared when I first moved to London would be classified now as HMOs. The two biggest concerns of residents of Chiswick-Gunsbury Ward are, as is the case for all of us, badly managed HMOs and in this case, extremely significantly, the number of HMOs in one small section of the ward, the Gunsbury Park Garden Estate. I live there, so of course I have a personal interest, but that doesn't mean I shouldn't listen to and act on my residents' concerns. My first-hand experiences back up and echo theirs. There are 52 registered HMOs in the Gunsbury Park Garden Estate. That is well over 10% of the total number of houses there. This has significantly affected its sense of community. Others have spoken about community, but there is damage that's done to community from HMOs when residents aren't integrated for various reasons and because too many HMO landlords seem not to care about the character of an area. It has shifted aspects of the area that residents value. It was designed as a garden suburb for families 100 years ago this year and is now a conservation area. Yet many HMO landlords pave over front and back gardens, turning them into concrete wastelands. It risks becoming a no-garden suburb. Residents there have had a tumultuous time with badly-run HMOs, one of which, after many years of campaigning, locals struggling to be heard resulted in the landlord being fined £130,000 for many infringements. And that's the backdrop of where I live and my neighbours live. The numbers point came to a head in 2021, when I asked by residents, when I was asked by residents to ask that no more HMOs be approved there. At that point, there were 32, all but two of them in five of its seven roads. Now, as I've said, there are 52, still all but two in those same five short roads. It is far too many. Additionally, turning these modest but well loaded-out family homes with good-sized rooms into HMOs is reducing the number of family homes in the borough, family homes that we as councillors know are badly needed. You can move out of a flat into a house. It's very difficult to move out of a house and downsize for families into flats. So we need more family homes to get that movement going. Chiswick-Gunsbury Ward has been flooded with applications for two blocks of flats. Thank you. At the local consultation session for Chiswick Tower late last year, the developer told me that the point of it being a block for co-living, that's code for flat sharing or HMO, was to relieve pressure on houses being turned into HMOs. Not true. HMO landlords can spot the opportunity of huge rental incomes, far from affordable, from separate rooms in houses compared with co-living HMOs. Our family homes will still be at risk. The only way to relieve pressure on family homes being turned into HMOs is to stop new applications being approved. Stop, full stop. The effect of the proposed extension, which I support, will be to bring even more shared flats into HMO status. The balance is already wrong. Please say no now to more houses being turned into HMOs because they simply aren't creating affordable rooms. A thousand pounds a month for a room is not affordable.
Thank you, councillor Biddof.
Thank you.
So we only have 15 minutes left, so we may not be able to hear from everyone unless you can keep it brief. Councillor Mashish, so thank you.
I'll be very brief, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for asking to speak. Now, we have, as councillor Biddof has said, a number of HMOs in our ward, Chiswick-Gunsbury, and we are trying to address those issues at the moment. So I welcome the consultation that's taking place at the moment, which has involved an officer coming to the Chiswick Area Forum to speak with residents directly about that. So I welcome the council for their work on that consultation. I'd also like to echo the comments of councillor Bruce and I would ask him that at the end of this, if this motion is passed, which I believe it will be, if he can set aside perhaps ways in which we'll be inspecting these rogue landlords. For example, can we set up a platform where we report these rogue landlords confidentially so that we are aware of who they are and they get fined accordingly? In regards to, thank you.
Two ways, you can email me directly and I'll pass it on. And there's an email address, planningenforcement@hounslow.gov.uk, I think it's called, but there are ways. And we'll publicise that, I'll take that away as well separately to this, but I will publicise that as well, make sure that's well known. Feel free, any journalists listening to publicise that and make sure that's known. I want to hear from you, residents. Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Mashish.
I accept your intention, thank you very much. And yes, and just, but obviously there is actually platforms already on the London Mayor's office where there is a way of reporting these matters on there. And also the House of Lords, or the House of Commons has just recently introduced a charitable My Housing Issue platform, which we could perhaps look into as well. But I welcome your contribution there. I believe that we can help vulnerable residents, as councillor Thompson has already said, by actually working a lot smarter as a council. For example, we should be sharp, really sharp, on any empty properties that are in our possession and we should not let them be empty for too long, because that could save that family, that could save that individual from being exposed to a rogue landlord. Now, I speak as someone who has worked in housing in my previous roles and it's something that I see all the time. Whenever there is private landlords, there are bound to be one or two who are rogue. So as a matter of relief for those who are on a waiting list for housing in Hounslow, I think that we need to address the idea of having empty homes being empty for too long, because the safety of our residents is at stake. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, point of order, please. Fascinating as though this debate is, and it's a massively important subject, but mindful of the time, can I move the question now before councillor Bruce has the opportunity to sum up?
Do we have a second? Okay. So everyone who agrees? And any against? Sorry, John. Any of stitches? No. So the vote can now be put. Do you want to sum up, councillor Bruce?
Yeah, absolutely. Just, I think, four quick things. Thank you to those who have spoken in support of the motion this evening. As we've heard from everyone, it's an incredibly important issue, very wide-ranging and difficult, but something we take very, very seriously. I want to thank the officers for their work in cracking down on rogue landlords. And just to highlight a couple of numbers I was sent today by the officers, we have issued in planning enforcement terms since 2020, £4 million worth of fines, over £4 million worth of fines to across planning enforcement. And specifically to private landlords, we've issued over £1 million worth of fines. And some might say that's not enough and more needs to be done, but I would say that's a really good start. I want to thank comms team and journalists out there who have highlighted particularly the recent case last week and hopefully will continue to do that and anything that we put out about this, making sure that this issue gets out there. What is meant is that residents have begun writing in their dro, I say droves, I mean, I've had a few now, whereas I didn't really have any before, highlighting these issues and making sure planning enforcement are aware of this and we can start taking even more action than we have been before. And lastly, I think has been said by a few people, I would encourage all those with interest in this, whether you're a tenant, whether you're a landlord, whether you're neither, to get involved in this consultation and tell us what you think. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. So if we can swiftly move to the vote. Members in favour of the recommendations? Marvelous. And those against? And any abstentions? Okay, so the recommendations in this motion are carried. Thank you very much. As you know, the third motion has been withdrawn as in a rare moment of agreement. We've all, we all support, we all agreed. Agenda item 21, there are no urgent matters. And agenda item 22, the next meeting of this council is Tuesday, the 27th of May 2025. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everyone for attending and contributing tonight and please remember to sign the attendance book if you haven't already. Thank you very much.